the state. And since I have to slide over so we can see the TV, and also this is going to end up being in the hands of Legal Affairs at some point to work on, I'm going to hand this over to the Chairman of Legal Affairs to conduct.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good evening. My name is Peter Angelini, Chair of Legal Affairs. I'm joined by my colleagues on the Legal Affairs Committee, Councilor Mark Bedanza and Councilor Pauline Cormier. And we are very fortunate this evening to have Karen Chapman, Planning and Development Director of the Monachuset Regional Planning Commission. And she'll be here to tell us about Mass General Law, Chapter 40, Section 3A, MBTA Communities. And with that, Karen?
Thank you very much, Peter. Can everybody hear me all right?
Is it on?
It is on.
Oh, okay.
Is that better?
It's very good.
Okay.
Thank you.
I'll try not to spit on it. So, as you know, it's required to have a briefing before the Board of Selectmen or the City Council on this new law. The new law was passed in January of 2021 as the, as part of the Economic Development Bill. Some other parts of the bill you may be familiar with is they reduced the zoning vote majority on a lot of housing amendments. So instead of the two-thirds majority vote, it's now just a majority vote. That was part of this economic development bill. But another part added Section 3A to Chapter 40A. And 40A is the Zoning Act, for those that don't know, our favorite chapter. It's an ancient chapter. So the purpose of this Section 3A was to encourage MBTA communities to adopt zoning districts where multifamily zoning is permitted as of right. The DHCD, Department of Housing and Community Development, at the time, they released preliminary guidance on how to comply with this statute. And then in December of this past year, they released draft compliance guidelines for multifamily districts under Section 3 of the Zoning Act. This is a map of our area. As you can see, Lemonster with the star there. The green are MBTA communities and the gray are not MBTA communities. As you can see, it's all the communities abutting, the communities that have rail stations. This shows the type of MBTA community you are. There's four types: subway or light rail, bus, commuter rail, and MBTA adjacent. All of the communities in MRPC that are MBTA communities are either commuter rail or MBTA adjacent. Lemonster is commuter rail, obviously, because you have a commuter rail station within your I put together this chart for one of our commission meetings, just to show all the communities in our region that are under this new law. Most are MBTA adjacent. AR, Fitchburg, Lemonster, and Shirley are all commuter rail because they have train stops in their location. So the 2020 housing units, that's the 2020 census housing units, that's the number of housing units you currently have. And then the minimum multifamily district unit capacity requirement, that is the number of units that you have to allow in your new district. So the, the column that is the percentages, 10, 15. So before I talked about the four types, so an MBTA adjacent community has to supply 10% as multifamily units. Commuter rail communities have to do 15% of their housing units as multifamily. As you can see, the math doesn't work out, that column that says 750, 750, 750. That is the minimum that DHCD has put in their guidelines for a multifamily district. So no matter who you are, including, say, Ashby, 750 units in a, in a new multifamily district. So it's, in your case, you need to supply 2,810 units in a multifamily district.
Yeah.
Yes?
Is that new? Are those new units? Added to what is existing in that?
It has, so the new district has to have the capacity to have 750 units.
Right, but in Lemonster?
If there already is some in there, it can be counted. But you need to allow the 750. Well, in your case, the 2810.
Exactly.
That's within the half mile of the rail station?
Correct.
Wow. Do you know what we have currently?
I do not.
Is that not? Okay.
It's still early yet.
Okay. No, that's good to know. Thank you.
You're welcome. So let's go through the requirements. There's only three short sections in this new section. First, Section A requires that you have a zoning ordinance or bylaw that provides for at least one district of reasonable size in which multifamily housing is permitted as of right. And when they say reasonable size, it shall have a minimum gross density of 15 units per acre and be located not more than .5 miles from a commuter rail station, subway station, ferry terminal, or bus station. So this means if you have 15 units per acre within a half a mile of a station, the DHCD calculated that 750 units and 50 acres is the number that you have to shoot for. So if you take the area of that whole .5 circle around the train station, they estimated that that would be 50 acres. And if you take 50 acres and multiply it by the 15 units per acre, you get the 750, and that's how they came up with the calculation. It does not say in the statute the 750 number. So the guidelines are what promoted the 750.
But you keep saying 750.
But we're 2810.
That's not applicable to Lemonster, right?
Right.
Okay, so it's the 2810.
Right.
Within that radius.
Correct. I'm sorry. So that's the first part. The second part of the statute says, if you fail to comply with this section, you won't be eligible for funds from these three grant programs: the Housing Choice Initiative, the Local Capital Projects Fund, and the Mass Works Infrastructure Program. I'm not sure if Lemonster has gotten any of these grants in the past, but it's sort of a carrot, a stick, but not a carrot.
Just a stick.
Just a stick. And then the last, the Department, meaning the Department of Housing and Community Development, shall promulgate guidelines to determine if an MBTA community is in compliance with this section. So basically, the only thing, the only part that says anything is this first part about the district of reasonable size, the gross density, and the distance from a commuter rail station. So in order to comply with this, the first deadline was March 31, 2022, which was a deadline to submit comments on the draft guidelines. And I put in a link to those draft guidelines, if you want to read them. They're, they explain what the statute is trying to do and what they believe compliance would look like. I did send this to Elizabeth, this slideshow, so if you want a copy of it, so you have these links, you can ask. So that March 31, obviously, already passed. We MRPC submitted, I wrote a, I don't know, only a four-page letter, because a lot of people wrote several pages of letters. And I know other communities in our region also submitted comments. And I know not too many people are excited about this. And then before May 2, City Council select boards must hold a briefing on the draft compliance guidance, which is what we're here doing today. So make sure you document this. I don't know if you tape your meetings, but put it in a place where people can see it. You know, you're going to have to prove that you did this. And also, May 2, by 5:00 PM, the MBTA community information form must be submitted. And there's another link to the form. I know Elizabeth has looked at the form. And so before May 2, you should fill out this form. And it just asks questions about your zoning, and do you have multifamily zoning now, and a lot of different questions.
Will you be providing these by email, copy of your presentation, or a hard copy?
I already sent a copy to Elizabeth.
All right, Elizabeth's got them. All right, so you'll forward them to us?
And then by December 31 of this year, submit to DHCD either a request for determination of compliance or an action plan. So under this one, you have from now until the end of the year, you would go in and analyze your zoning, see if you currently comply. If you don't currently comply, you have to come up with an action plan. And that action plan has to be submitted to DHCD for approval. And the action plan will say, you know, we're going to evaluate our zoning, we're going to talk to the people, we're going to go around the city and see where we should put this, and we will pass a zoning amendment by X time. That's sort of what's going, going in the action plan. If you find that you do already comply, you would put together a packet of required documents, and that's the determinate, the request for determination of compliance. And DHCD has 90 days to say yes or no to that. So either one of those two things have to be done by the end of this year. And then by July 1 of next year, that's the deadline for obtaining DHCD approval of those two things. So they, they have 90 days, but they're saying July 1 is the last time they'll give any approvals. And then...
So it sounds, it sounds like if we came up with a draft zoning, proposed draft zoning amendment, we should have that approved before we adopt it?
No. So you wouldn't, so you would, if you don't have anything now, you send in the action plan that says you're going to do those things. And they say, yes, we approve your action plan. Then you just go and do it.
Okay.
And then you would, if it passed here, you would submit the determination of compliance at that point, to show them that you've complied.
We have, we have some units, I think, that would qualify within that half-mile radius currently. But I suspect we don't have enough, based on the density that is required. So we'd probably have to create a district with an increased density in order to meet that. So it sounds, it sounds like the plan would be is to come up with a, like, an action plan of what we're going to do, how we're going to change the zoning, and get it approved before we do it.
Exactly.
Okay.
Council, Council, excuse me for one moment. I should have probably announced this prior to the meeting. I spoke in the mayor's office this morning. Wendy has filed a NOI with, for a grant that specifically provide us with a consultant to guide us through this entire process.
Okay.
And we all know her stellar record, so I'm kind, I'm kind of comfortable with that. So I know it...
That won't hurt.
No, sir. I'm sorry.
No problem. Thank you.
I have a question.
Yes.
It's kind of directed towards Elizabeth. Would you be able to give us a map with that half-mile circle, that half-mile radius? So we can see exactly what it includes? Oh, you already have it?
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
Can everybody use their microphones, please, instead of talking to each other without the microphones? So we can all hear?
Did you want to answer any questions?
I wasn't, I wasn't aware that we have a map, but, you know.
I'd like a copy of that also while we're having a discussion. That would be really helpful.
I think we should all have it, anyway.
Yeah. No, I think the council should have it.
And this is, this is not affordable housing either.
No.
And that was a big thing in, in drawing this whole, this whole ordinance or proposal.
Right.
That, that would take care of itself in the process.
Right.
Hopefully, it does. But I think that's why it wasn't brought up, is having to be affordable.
And that was one of our comments to DHCD, that why aren't you requiring any affordable? You know? Yeah, we'll see. So then by December 31, 2024, you have until that time to adopt your zoning. And then I, so a lot of the state departments, like Department of Housing and Community Development, the Executive Office of Housing and Economic Development, and Mass Housing Partnership are all trying to give technical assistance and provide any help they can to make this easier for the community. So this is from a new program called TODEX. I don't know how they say it, but it's Transit Oriented Development Explorer, is what the program is called, TODEX, for short. And you can find that on MHP.net. And so you just plug in your community, and it gives you this half-mile circle around your station. So you can see the little T in there, where the station is. And so the black outline is actually the available developable land. So you see on the left, there's like a blue thing that goes into the circle, and then on the side, there's a green thing. And then up top, there's a little bit of stairs. That means that it's either protected open space, it's state land, it's environmentally constrained. For some reason or another, you can't develop there. And then you see the river coming through the middle. And then all the gray areas there are non-residential areas. So only the yellow, orange, dark red, those are the residential areas within a half-mile of that station. And it says on the left, the total units is 569, with an average density of 1.3 units per acre, which is really far from where you need to be. That's my brief, my brief briefing.
Thank you, Karen.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much. Ms. Wood, do you have anything else you'd like to add?
Not this time.
All right. I just, obviously, you would have included this in your presentation, Karen, but there's obviously no carve-outs for Lemonster residents to be a preference for this housing, if indeed it's developed, right?
Right.
So what, what scares me, to be perfectly honest with you, is I've been through this once in another area, and there are some NGOs, non-governmental organizations, who are very good. They put, they're from larger cities, Worcester, Lowell, and they, they, they do the applications for folks, and they stuff the channel with them. So what you get, you get all these affordable units, but none of the residents of our community are beneficiaries. So we get, we get to take all the downside risk, as you would say, without any of the benefit. That's a tough pill to swallow.
Yeah, just to clarify, I thought you said that these were not affordable units.
No.
They're not affordable, Pete. They're not, this is not affordable housing. It's, it's just, it's about density and people walking to a train station to commute. But it's not affordable. It's not low income or moderate income.
There's no affordable requirement. But that doesn't mean you can't put that in your new zoning.
Right. We, we could count.
You can.
We can count those units.
Yes.
We could, but we're not required.
Right.
I think people are going to get mixed up with the, with the percentages of the affordable housing we have, and the percentage that has to be done for this. That's happening in all communities. I mean, this has been challenged in a lot of communities, but not going to get anybody anywhere, I don't think.
Right.
But, I mean, it is being challenged, is a number of organizations challenging it.
Right.
I mean, it's a great concept, but not everybody can do it.
Yeah. Especially our communities out here, where most don't have water or sewer. I mean, how do you say, we're going to build 15 units on an acre?
Right.
If we don't have the infrastructure to support it? It's disingenuous to put in a zoning district if you then can't build it. That's my opinion. I shouldn't, I should keep that out of the conversation.
The existing density, according to the chart, is 1.5 units per acre, and we have to turn that into 15?
15.
Forty-five. Forty-five to get to that 2810.
So you would think, at that density level, the units would be more affordable than a standalone, right? So, I mean, you...
Naturally affordable.
Yeah. So I guess, I mean, I would think that's part of the concept.
I guess we just have to move the rail station to Brooks Pond, it would all suck.
High density, right. I just can't imagine how we're going to change that area to, to get to that density.
It's going to force us to rezonally industrial land on Asher Street. That's what it's going to do.
Yeah. So you can also, there's a stipulation in there that you could do an area that's only 25 acres, if you can't get the density in that area, and do the rest in another place. If you, you have to show that that's the case, though.
And to clarify, it's just zoning right now. No one has to build them.
Right. That's right.
They just have to be able to.
You have to have the capacity.
You have to have the capacity, but then somebody come in with a plan, somebody can come in with a plan, and the normal requirements for permitting, they're not in place, because this meets this new law.
It's overlay.
Right. So, so we get the zoning in place.
Yeah.
We, we don't have to build them, but somebody can come in with a ready, with a project ready to go, and we would effectively have to build them.
Right. Because it's as of right.
Without permitting, yep.
They would, they would meet, they would meet the density requirements. That, that doesn't mean they wouldn't have to comply with other issues, whether it's conservation, whether it's...
Right.
Site plan, site plan approval, all those things. It's not, so it's not, you know, it's not a 40B project.
Right. But it's, it's as of right, and you can't do a special permit.
Right. The density...
You're right. It has to go to conservation.
Right. We look forward to the consultant.
Their help, for sure.
I was relieved when I hit that news this morning.
I mean, I think there are only, like, 175 communities that felt comfortable with the possibility of being able to do it. The rest are all concerned about being cumbersome and unrealistic. And I know that the MMA has taken a position, working, you know, to correct some of it and raise some serious concerns about it. And I think they're being looked at, but I don't think it's going to get anywhere.
How'd you like to be in Ashby?
I'm sorry?
How'd you like to be in Ashby?
Yeah, it's, it's...
Goodness.
It's serious.
Yeah, it really is.
So the DHCD will come out with revised guidelines, based on all the comments that they get. And, you know, I suggested that they reduce the number for the smaller communities with no infrastructure, and, you know, we'll, we'll see what they do. It's just, it's difficult for a lot of communities. I thank you for your time.
Thank you so much for coming down with the presentation.
Thank you very much.
This gets us over the first hurdle. And again, those, the evidence that we held this hearing will be required as part of the submittal, so thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We now have a informational meeting at 6:20 PM on C-62, and this is under Legal Affairs.
Thank you, Mr. President.
C-62 Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, requests that the City Council authorize the mayor, on behalf of the city, to finalize the conservation restriction easement on watershed property to the Department of Conservation and Recreation, DCR. Again, this is part of the city's acquisition of Shoal and Farms back in 2001, and will finalize the terms of the conservation restriction, and has been reviewed by the city solicitor.
Mr. Brooks, would you introduce yourself and the gentlemen that are accompanying you, please?
Good evening, ma'am. Good evening. Roger Brooks, former business manager at the Lemonster DPW, and I'm with Jake Fleming, who's been doing a great job in my stead. I'm thrilled to look at some of the things that he's got accomplished for us. And then Paul Kennedy, who's been working, doing our watershed inspections for how many years now? It's been a while.
Yeah, retired in the fire department in '06, '07. Pat LaPointe called me.
Yep.
I've been there since.
So the original thought was, Paul being our firewood, was...
Let me begin by reading, let me begin by reading, then I'll have you guys introduce yourself. C-62 Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, requests that the City Council authorize the mayor, on behalf of the city, to finalize the conservation restriction easement on watershed property to the Department of Conservation and Recreation, DCR. Again, this is part of the city's acquisition of Shoal and Farms back in 2001, and will finalize the terms of the conservation restriction, and has been reviewed by the city solicitor. Mr. Brooks, would you introduce yourself and the gentlemen that are accompanying you, please?
Good evening, ma'am. Good evening. Roger Brooks, former business manager at the Lemmister DPW, and I'm with Jake Fleming, who's been doing a great job in my stead. I'm thrilled to look at some of the things that he's got accomplished for us, and, and Paul Kennedy, who's been working, doing our watershed inspections for how many years now? It's been a while.
Yeah, retired in the fire department in '06, '07. Pat LaPointe called me.
Yep.
Been there since.
So, the original thought was, Paul being our firewood, was the perfect person to keep an eye on the watershed, and it's worked out extremely well all the way around for us. So, with respect to what we're looking at tonight, as Councilor Angelini mentioned, this goes back to the acquisition of Shoal and Farms. Shoal and Farms acquisition, as you know, started in 1998 when Mr. Posick and his wife put together Shoal and Realty Trust, and the Shoal and Realty Trust went to develop the property on Pleasant Street. They did 178 lots on 167 acres of land, and at the time, it was certainly one of the subdivisions that had occupied a lot of our attention here in the city. It had an impact to the watershed around Fallbrook, and we were concerned about making any kind of commitment to the number of houses up there, demand on water and things like that. So, the mayor engaged the Posick family in negotiations. The trustees of reservations had made an offer, and at the time, hadn't gotten a response. So, starting in 1998 and all the way through 2000, there were negotiations, so went back and forth with the property owners. They submitted a subdivision plan from Thompson and Liston that's recorded at the Worcester, at the registry of deeds here in Fitchburg. And so, at that point, the mayor had engaged Senator Antonioni and, Senator Antonioni and Secretary of Environmental Affairs, Bob Durand, were working together to try and come together and, and put together a plan to help the city of Lemmister acquire the property. So, over that period in 2000 to 2001, there was a presentation made to the council for, I think Paul's got the, I don't know, it's, it's this one right here, but it was in reference to enabling the mayor to negotiate and secure whatever funding and agreements were necessary to be able to acquire the property. As we moved closer to coming to a final purchase price, Senator Antonioni and Secretary Durand worked on this conservation restriction, agricultural preservation restriction, as well as a fisheries and wildlife. It's, it was a comprehensive conservation restriction on not only Shoal and Farms, but in order to access the environmental affairs funding that was available, we had to put together something that would give them some substance for the funding that they were gonna provide us with. So, the end of this agreement resulted in them providing us with just over $1.58 million in purchase money towards the acquisition of Shoal and Farms, which ultimately cost $4.75 million. And in return for that, we gave them a conservation restriction on the watershed in city Lemmister, and this enabled us to both secure the property in perpetuity so that it would never be developed or sold for any other purpose other than the watershed activity. And in return, the Department of Conservation and Recreation was able to provide passive recreation. You see the trail stewards being able to develop hiking trails up there in conjunction with the rec department, and fishing and hunting are allowed up there. So, those things were not allowed prior to this conservation restriction. When the, when the state and city finally agreed, we actually implemented the conservation restrictions that are before you today, when you look at what's on here. All of that was implemented immediately in the summer of 2001. Be honest with you, in the water department, we thought it had already been recorded and agreed upon. So, when they came to us a few years ago and said, "We have some details to work out on the conservation restriction," we were a little surprised, but, so this is the final step. It's gone before Sherin Everett at Colman and Page. Jake's worked with her probably over the last three months, four months, to finalize the language. And so, the last step is, is to vote on it here tonight.
Terrific, Roger. Thank, thank you so much for the overview. Mr. Fleming, do you have anything to add?
I think it's, what's important is, is that what's in the restriction is really what's happening, the watershed, and now, like Roger said, the theory of it went into place real quick, but this really...
Sorry, what? But, this just formalizes it, and it will allow us to access funds for like a Forestry Management Act, and, you know, different programs like that that require conservation restriction to be on the land, and without this, you know, we won't qualify on those properties for it. So, that's, that's one of the things that we've worked with DCR to finalize, so we can, you know, in theory, we've been there, but we're not benefiting from it being in place, too. So, it's really good for DCR, for the city, and...
Terrific. We actually, this council passed, well, let me backtrack. Mr. Chap Delane, a purchasing agent, came down and asked if he could enter into a five-year contract with a forestry consultant. So, I think, and we approved that, so I think that's gonna be beneficial in, in building that forest management plan, utilizing those resources, the hiking trails and the like. And it's my understanding from reading the CR that the access for fishing is restricted, right, to designated areas.
Just to the, the south side of Nottown, where the, the state, the DCR property is, not at any of the other reservoirs or northern town.
Terrific. But, before I go on to compliment you gentlemen on what a wonderful job you've done, let me turn, I thought we'd have Mayor Mazzarella here this evening, but instead, he sent the mayor of Nottown, Paul Kennedy. And Paul, could you, could you share with the council perhaps any problems that you've encountered out there during your tenure as a watershed warden?
There's a lot.
Make sure that microphone's on.
Since I started doing this, and there's no fishing in Fallbrook, Haynes, Moss Distributing, and Nottown, they're all over the place. Nottown, I have a regular crew up there, and I feel like their fathers to some of them. I mean, it's the same old story. You walk in, "Oh, I forgot." But, I don't get into anything, but I'm very polite to them. I've only had two times up there where a guy almost grabbed me, and that was out where the drowning was. And then, I had another one on Palmer Road, the junkyard, right up to my face. So, most of them are pretty good, but they keep coming back. They don't, they don't, they can't read Spanish or English, and the signs are there. And dog walking, that's another one. Haynes Reservoir had a guy come right up to me, he was gonna walk, and even the sign over him, and that sign disappeared, too. I had to trick him that it was on, the one you guys put up, the new one. But, they just keep going. They don't care. And they, and sometimes, they look around, and the dog's done its duty, it remains there. So, they go home in an empty bag. That's what happens. I've had all kinds of stories up there. I've been lucky in getting trees, forestry department here to block the road. That's another thing up there. There's so much standing dead red pine, and it rots at the base, but it's been there so long, where your branches came out, like 20 feet up, it'll snap on a good wind, and there's some good wind up there. And it'll just come down. It'll most likely get you before you know it. And even the live oaks, which are probably eight inches around, some of them snap, same foot, 20 foot up. So, there should be some good trimming in there. And then, down where they allow fishing in the back, I got a road down there. It was an old cot road from day one, but there's rocks sticking up out of it, and I don't wanna damage the truck. I have gone down there with my son, and he watched to make sure. And I've been down there twice. Dick O'Brien runs down there with that little pickup he's got, but I got the old '97 Chevy, I don't wanna lose it. I'm serious. But, I, I go, I'll go down there, walk down, and I'll make a phone call, 'cause, and he knows where I'm at, the exact spots, and so, if I tell him what time I'm coming out, and if I don't show up, then I hope he comes up. But, all kidding apart, I mean, there's a lot of nice people up there. I met a couple from Pasadena who raise horses, and they have a lot of horses in the Pasadena Rose Bowl Parade. But, I think the one day, I was on Palmer Road doing my shot time, a nice motorcycle parked on the side, a Harley. And I got out, and I wrote registrations down, mainly not if somebody's lost, and actually, these registrations did pin the guy that set the fires, the three fires two years ago up there. And I had him right to the T. So, I go down into the pine grove by the big boulder you see on Route 2 when you go up. This guy comes up to me, dungaree shirt, so polite, I was flabbergasted. It was Jay Leno and his wife. And I, I'll tell ya, I was up there probably 5:00, just talking, I mean, so easy to talk to. And so, there's been some nice people up there. And then, you got the ones that, the other thing, too, I got a picture of the 24-inch Perkel on the dam, dead in the water. I find good-sized hornpouch over the big rock on Palmer Road, dead. And there's a lot of people up there, and I was sending all, well, you get them anyway, the notices about what I find. I found 19-inch bass, dead, in the bushes. I mean, they, they just can't hack it, you know? They just leave everything for us. But, other than that, I did have one tent site up there one Sunday morning. I mean, it was from soup to nuts. This guy was living there, he had his towel in the tree with a bar of soap, he had this big tent, he had all the brand-new stuff. And I know where he, in fact, I gave Roger, Pat the pictures, he had his kids, well, he, by him, well, he, I don't know, I never caught him, but I did check trees. I find him hiding in the trees.
His name wasn't Palmer, was it?
Huh?
His name wasn't Palmer, was it?
No. No, no.
It's a joke.
I know. You ever been up in the solo hole?
Yes, I have.
I cleaned it out one day, just to get a picture of it, 'cause I got most of the solo holes, and I found another one. But, it's just, there's a fish, they leave them, the dogs are running rampant, they go up there. Now, they put more, a couple more trails up off North Manoosh, heading down to the Nutting House down there, through the woods. And opening day of archery season, you can hunt archery, but here comes a new trail, and everybody's walking under the stands, 'cause I gotta be honest with you, you don't see the all-red dots when you go in there in the morning, and they go up there and they sit. And some of the people had a lot to say, so. But, oh, the time that I've been doing it, I've had good times. I've had two good fires up there, 10:00 at night across the dam in that peninsula, and I'm sure you all know where it is, go back a few years. And then, I think it was three years ago, I got, I'm at the lights of Monte Le Marode, and I got smoke coming right across Route 2. Where it was, was on the same site, burnt from the same place back. All that pine needles got in there, and that was, you know, time-consuming.
That's, that'd be our biggest fear, right? Fire.
Well, that would've got out to the power line. In fact, they had a fire one night behind the boundary marker across the dam.
Yep.
Yeah, well, you get down to the right rock, then you go out to the point, and then there's another plateau here. They went out there, and as they decided to build a fire on the woodside behind a big slab of granite, well, they got away from it, probably burned about 10 feet, but I had some nice tools and I left, they had them on, they had shovels, they went out and got it. So, but...
Well, thank you, Mr. Kennedy.
Okay.
I'm gonna go back to Roger and see if he, if he can address any of those issues of the forestry issues that Paul was talking about, that red pine issue.
Well, so, eight, nine years ago, when we harvested up there, we took out a lot of red pine, 'cause there was a market for it. We actually did three or four cuttings, and those cuttings generated some revenue for the water department. You know, you wind up netting out, you know, it might be $15,000 to $25,000, depending on the harvest. Those red pines were suitable for poles at the time. Now, I think the ones that Paul's talking about today are the same ones, but they're probably rotted. How good they're gonna be, we don't know. When we do the management plan, we'll have an idea as to what's available to sell and what the market will be for those, but if there isn't a market, they should still come down, you know, be harvested or chipped up or whatever. Couple of things, though, that Paul's talking about that I think we all need to take, give a thought to here, is giving some enforcement power so that whether he could ticket the people that are in violation up there, whether, you know, they're people that are walking their dogs, and it's, all of this is, like Paul said, is posted. This, this has been posted since 2001 when we did the transaction. So, it's more a matter of some of the people just ignoring the signs, and it's, it's really clear, there's no question that when you walk into that area, what's appropriate and what isn't. You know, no horses, no motorized vehicles, no snowmobiles, that type of thing. You wanna, you wanna cross-country ski, you wanna hike, all of that's certainly appropriate. On the backside of Nottown, you've got Lemmister State Forest, we do not own over there. So, you have people coming in from the Princeton side of the state forest who don't see the signage because it's not on our side, and how far into the property they go, case by case, I can't even begin to tell you. But, I, I do think if, if Paul had some method to say, okay, and, and like you said, some of these people are, you know, repeaters. They're up there, they fish off the dam, or they'll jump across the dam out to the point, and they're, they're out there, and, and he'll see them, you know, two and three times probably, either a month or half a dozen times during the summer. But, you know, until we can actually put some teeth into his ability to enforce that, it's kinda difficult. We can't send police up there, we don't have, you know, you just wouldn't be able to have them get up there in time to do anything, you know, and especially at night.
I have one last question before I go to other members. Do you have a plan to address some of the deciduous trees along the shoreline?
Well, I think Jake can get into that a little bit more detail, 'cause he talked to the forester. We, we did do that contract that you spoke of. That's gonna be a real godsend for us, because they'll sit down and put together a real comprehensive plan. And I guess, I'll let Jake speak to some of that, but yes.
Thank you.
So, Gary Goldrip is the forester that we are in contract with doing the forestry management plan. He's, he's all but finalized the, the plan. Part of the, the grant that we're using to help pay for this contract requires a conservation restriction as well, so we, you know, with this conservation restriction, we'll finalize that funding to be able to, you know, put towards finalizing the plan. One thing that we're looking to do with that plan is to clear around, not just mainly Nottown, but all of the reservoirs and have a buffer zone. What that does is it takes away a lot of the, the leaf litter, fallen branches, trees, fallen trees into the reservoir, which break down, decay, and it can contribute to organic carbons in the water, which then affect a lot of the, the big project that we have, the SRF loan up at Nottown, is to address the carbon removal in the raw water up there. So, in addition to affecting the treatment process, we're trying to attack it at the source, and the sources to remove any, you know, dead, decaying matter from the water. So, if we can, you know, if you think of a Wachusett reservoir, when you go up on the Clinton side, you see how it's, it's clear, you know, for, they have 75, 100 feet from the shoreline. You know, if, if we could have something, you know, maybe on a smaller scale or similar, we believe that will help the, the water quality at Nottown and all the reservoirs. And that's, that's one of the areas that we ask Gary to, to focus on, to see, and I think he's include, or he is including that in his, his plan, and we've seen some of his draft work. And that finalized, we'll hopefully go into implementation as soon as we have that done and have the restriction. The restriction does allow for, and that's one of the things that we've negotiated the language with, is to allow actions like that, us to do forestry management, do tree cutting, selective cutting, per best forestry management practices, and just making the, the typical conservation restriction fit the Lemmister watershed property. And we've been going back and forth with, with DCR, you know, for, for probably well over a year now, you know, negotiating terms that, that are, you know, we feel are best suited for Lemmister, so.
Terrific. Thank you, Mr. Fleming. Can we go to members in my committee, Councilor Bedanza?
No, I just wanna thank all of you gentlemen. Thank you for all your dedication to this project. I know it's a long duration, and it's been... I know it's a long duration, and it's benefited the city in so many different ways, and happy to have that conservation restriction in front of us this evening as another step forward in a, in a good, good story.
Counselor Correa? Any members in the council? Counselor Shalifus Effer?
Thank you. This might be for Roger, I think Mr. Fleming just spoke a little bit to it, but the city acquired Shollin Farms in 2001.
April 2001.
Right, right. So the conservation restriction, you know, why now? Why 21 years later?
A couple of... First of all, it was on DCR to prepare and record this, so part of it, part of it falls to, and I don't know if it was, they thought it was in place, because when they actually did the closing on Shollin Farms, there was an agricultural preservation restriction and a conservation restriction on the property. So whether the staff didn't realize that the watershed piece hadn't been recorded, I can't tell you. They came to us, what, five years ago? John Rosebery and I sat down, went through a parcel list with one of the staff members, and that's the parcel list that is with the documents now. And so we went through that with them, and then, like Jake was saying, we just went through the terms and conditions. But those were the same terms and conditions, as I said earlier, that we'd agreed to and implemented back in July of 2001. So the signage that's there was up there back then. Paul's been working under the same oversight and guidelines as what we had established in 2001, so nothing's changing within this framework. It's just a matter of finalizing the documentation. So I don't know if they had an early retirement plan in 2001. I think they did, you know, they had five and five, they gave you five years and a five-year bonus on your retirement, but there was, there was a staff change there at the state level at that time, so that's what I think it might have been.
I'm just curious why it came to light now. I mean, was there any particular thing that brought the lack of the comprehensive watershed, including Shollin Farms, conservation restriction to the city? Did something prompt this, or come to light that we thought, Jesus, this is missing? How come it wasn't, how come it wasn't in place?
Yeah, I don't know. That's, that's on the DCR end, not on the city. See, we did everything we were supposed to do and had everything finalized. And that's why on our end, when they recorded the document, that was it for us.
Anything for the council? Anyone else on the council? Let me just conclude, Paul, I know you wanted, but I just want to say that this CR encompasses 60 parcels. I mean, it's massive. And I had the pleasure of working on a few of these with, with you folks and some for the land trust. But I'm amazed at the rights that the city has actually retained in this CR. It's really impressive. We have the ability to designate areas off limits, we have, you know, a management plan that we're gonna put in place. So I just want to tip my hat, you guys did an outstanding job, and I'm glad the city was done before, in my lifetime, anyway, this thing finally.
One of the final things, I say, you know, we, we talk about different things that this has been able to provide the city with opportunities to go out, exercise, use the trails and so forth. Dick O'Brien did work with me as we were working through this and after it was finalized, to move a couple of the trails away from the shoreline. We like to have a 400-foot buffer away from the shoreline as far as any activity. Obviously, when you're talking about fishing, you're not gonna be able to enforce a 400, a 400-foot buffer. So the south half of Nottown is available to fish, but everything else is, is 400 feet away. We try and enforce that to maintain the integrity of the water going into the water system, so... But it's, it's been a, you know, as Paul says, it's, it's really good. It's satisfying to see a lot of positive things happen up there. There are a few things that if we could put an enforcement thing in, I think that might help a little bit, so something to think about.
Thank you. Paul, do you have one more thing?
Yeah, I wanted one more, say one more thing. Starting last year, they're taking the signs down, unbolting them out of the trees. So they're disappearing, and the ATVs, forget it. It's loaded. You need a couple battalion of Marines up there. I mean it, they're, they come in from Palmetto, they come from the back of Sportsman's Club Park there, come in their road, and it came, if anybody knew the old Rocky Hound Club up there. It was down there, they come right out the back line of there, cross onto Nottown Road, which takes them down to the sandy beach, and then they can, they're booked, they can go anywhere. But that's what's going on, I mean, God.
Well, we'll, we'll keep that certainly in mind, and perhaps we can find a way to, to provide some kind of mechanism to help you with some enforcement. Gentlemen, thank you so much for coming down tonight. Well, before, before you leave, let me just read this into the record real quick before I figure... Authorization to enter into an agreement for conservation restriction. Unfortunately, there's no date on this. It's from the Department of Public Works. Respectfully request that the city council authorize the mayor on behalf of the city to finalize the conservation restriction easement on watershed property to the Department of Conservation and Recreation as part of the city's acquisition of Shollin Farms in 2001. The attached document entitled Conservation Restriction and Conservation Easement finalizes the terms of the CR and has been reviewed by the city solicitor, and this is signed respectfully by Raymond Racine, Director, Department of Public Works. And with that, I will close the informational hearing, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. Thank you, gentlemen. And we can move right into what was supposed to be a 6:00 PM hearing on 48-22.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. 48-22. This is amendments to the city Lemmister fee schedule. Dear Honorable Councilors, I respectfully request the following fees are updated. Chapter 12, Article 1, Section 12-2-Fees, excuse me, -schedule, by deleting number 6, 12, 17, 28, 33, 41, 42, 43, and 51 in its entirety. By deleting 3, 8, 9, 14, 15, 16, 19, 30, 38, 44, 45, 47, 53, 54, 55, 56, 57, 58, and inserting in its place the following, excuse me, 3, circuses, et cetera. If admission price is 50 cents or more, $100; if admission price is less than 50 cents, $75. 8, hockers and peddlers, $50. 9, in holders/rooming houses, $25. Number 14, motor vehicles as common carriers each, $30. Number 15, motor vehicles as common carriers/operators of, $10. Number 16, motor vehicles sale of second-hand, all classes, $100. Number 19, Sunday entertainment licenses authorized under Massachusetts general law, Chapter 136, Section 4, single application, $1,000, annual license, $1,000. Number 30, for filing certificate of person conducting business under any title other than his real name, $35. Number 38, for entering certificate of marriage filed by persons married out of the Commonwealth, $25. Number 44, for recording order granting locations of poles, piers, abutments, or conduits, alterations, or transfers thereof, and increase in number of wires and cables or attachments under the provision of Mass. General Law, Chapter 166, Section 22, $100. Number 45, genealogical research. No charge up to 15 minutes, $25 for up to one hour, $25 each additional hour, plus the cost of certified copies. Number 47, for receiving and filing of a complete inventory of all items to be included on a closing-out sale, except first page, $20, additional page, $2. Number 53, zoning petitions. Filing fee, $250, plus reimbursement for all public hearing publications and the cost of certified mail to abutters. Number 54, floodplain permits. Filing fee, $250, plus reimbursement for all public hearing publications and the cost of certified mail to abutters. Number 55, Board of Appeals applications. Filing fee, $250, plus reimbursement for all public hearing publications and the cost of certified mail to abutters. Number 56, city council special permits. Filing fee, $250, plus reimbursement for all public hearing publications and the cost of certified mail to abutters. Number 57, automatic amusement devices, $100. Special permit fees. Water Supply Protection District, $250, plus reimbursement for all public hearing publications and the cost of certified mail to abutters. And by also inserting the following. Number 60, raffle and bazaar permits, $25. Number 61, transient vendors, $100. Number 62, street lists, $30. Number 63, home birth. It's a typo there, it's B-I-R-T, but it should be birth. $35 includes one copy of a child's birth certificate at completion. And allow the city to renumber the fee chart as needed. And then you will see below, please find the original fees before proposed changes. And it just gives a detailed list of those, which I don't believe I have to read. So let me begin by saying, I, I missed an error in this, and it is... Let me find it. It is on page 5, and that is the Chapter 136, Section 4. It's actually a statutory issue, and I have it right here. 136, that should be $20 per license permit with a maximum of $400 per year. And that, again, statutory. So let me just grab that if I might here.
That's number 19?
Yes, number 19. Where the heck is it? Be with me for a second, you have a ton of paperwork, yeah?
Take your time, because I might, I gotta start the meeting in a minute anyway, so we can take this up.
No, that's not it. All right, Counselor.
Are you looking for the citation for the law, Counselor Angelini?
Yeah, I had, I had printed off that statute.
It's, um...
Chapter 136, Section 4, Subparagraph 4.
Yes.
Yeah? No, I had it, and I do have it here, you're just gonna find it. This is driving me crazy.
I have it, if you...
You have it?
Yep.
All right.
Do you want me to read it?
Please.
Do you want me to read it, or do you want me to wait?
We've got a couple of minutes, if you want to start, and then I'll...
Yeah.
Stop, and we can resume.
Section 4, 1, the mayor of a city of the selectmen of a town, upon written application, describing the proposed dancing or game, sport, fair, exposition, play, entertainment, or public diversion, except as provided in Section 105 of Chapter 149, may grant upon such reasonable terms and conditions as they may prescribe, a license to hold on Sunday dancing or any game, sport, fair, exposition, play, entertainment, or public diversion, for which a charge in the form of payment or collection of money, or other valuable consideration is made for the privilege of being present thereat or engaging therein, except horse racing, dog racing, boxing, wrestling, and hunting with firearms, provided, however, that no such license shall be issued for dancing, for which a charge in the form of a payment or collection of money, or other valuable consideration is made for the privilege of engaging therein, and provided further, however, that no license issued under the paragraph shall be granted to permit such activities before 1:00 in the afternoon, and provided further that such application except the application to conduct an athletic game or sport shall be approved by the Commissioner of the Division of Professional Licensor, and shall be accompanied by a fee of $2, or in the case of an application for the approval of an annual license by a fee of $50. Section 2, license...
I'm gonna stop you right there, you can read, continue reading in a moment. At this point, I'm gonna call the meeting to order for April 11th of 2022, and I ask that you all please stand and join me for a salute to the flag.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now gonna take a roll call of the honorable members of the Lemmister City Council, beginning with Counselor Bedanza.
Present.
Counselor Cormier.
Present.
Counselor Ardinger.
Present.
Counselor Angelini.
Present.
Counselor Brady.
Present.
Counselor Shalifus Effer.
Present.
Counselor Deacon.
Present.
Counselor Frida.
Present.
And I am present, all nine members are present. Do we have any records to approve this evening, Madam Vice President?
Mr. President, I have reviewed the records of March 28th, 2022. I find them to be in good order, and I ask that they be placed on file.
Okay, if there's no objections, the minutes for March 28th, 2022 will be placed on file. And at this point, I will ask for a motion, Counselor Bedanza, and a second, Counselor Shalifus Effer, all those in favor of going into recess, signifying unusual manner by vote of 9 to 0. We are now in recess. Madam Clerk, if you'd like to continue reading Section 2 of that...
I'm gonna skip on down just to 4, because it's gonna be the only relevant piece of it.
Perfect.
And it was just entitled 4 for the whole thing, so that was my fault, I apologize. So the most relevant piece is, the city council of a city or board of selectmen of a town made a term in fees for the issuance of licenses, but in no event shall any such fee be greater than $20 per event and $400 per year.
Thank you, I found it after you started reading. And if I may continue, I also would like to share with the council this guidance from the Division of Local Services. And it's entitled "Jews of Fees," and it's dated February 2016, and I'm just gonna read a portion of it, I think that will be helpful. A fee is an amount charged for a service to the individuals who use or benefit from it. A fee may be imposed when a local government provides a particular service, open parentheses, such as a police detail, close parentheses, issues a permit or license, or offers a benefit, like a recreational program. Municipalities can establish fees as long as they meet the three-pronged test set out in Emerson College versus Boston, 391 Mass., 415, 1984. Number 1, the fee must be charged for a particular service that benefits the party paying the fee in a manner not shared by other members of society. In other words, a fee may not be charged for the general services that are mandatory or supplied to the public at large, such as core education and police protection. Number 2, a fee must be paid by choice. That is, the person paying the fee must have the option of not using the service and thereby avoiding the charge. It follows that a service can be withheld from individuals who refuse to pay. Number 3, a fee must be collected, not to raise revenues per se, but to compensate the governmental entity for its expenses in providing the service. This has been interpreted to mean that a fee cannot exceed the cost to provide the service. And one more paragraph, if I may. As a practical matter, local officials are faced with many considerations when deciding whether to implement or increase fees. These include, but are not limited to, the legal authority to charge a fee according to general laws, special legislation, and home rule powers, the attitudes of citizens and political leaders toward fees, and the cost. Before proposing fee increases, a community should review its current user fees in accordance with formal guidelines. And, Mr. President, that's precisely what I've done. The city clerk is extremely helpful in this process. One of the first things we did was reach out to the city solicitor. We identified... We identified the fees that are regulated by statute, and then in late January, we notified different departments of our intent. We're reviewing the fees, and we were looking for feedback from all those folks. I think, I called the mayor initially as well to get some feedback from him, and he was in favor of the concept. We didn't talk about any of the fee prices, but he said that, you recall, years ago, someone started the process but never followed through. And I can understand why. This is, it's very complex, and it's a lot that goes into it. So I think we've taken an initial step here. It's going to require some fine tuning, some additional work, but I'm confident that the members of my committee and I can hash out something, can hammer out something that hopefully is acceptable to members of the council. And in accordance with the genesis of the DLF statement that I read, we are in no way looking at revisiting these fees as a source of revenue. I mean, it wasn't that long ago it was brought up in these very chambers that, you know, the cost of some of these special permits, the legal notices, and all the other documents that accompany it exceeds the cost of the current cost of the permit. So we see inflation taking off as well. These fees that we're proposing are in line with other communities, and I would suspect, in light of the inflation and cost of living increases that we're experiencing, that a lot of communities are going to start going up on the fees that we're trying to mirror. So I think they're reasonable, and do we need to do some work on this? Absolutely, but I think we can get the job done. And with that, I'd like to see if I can get any comment from members of my committee. Counselor Badanza?
Sure. I just note the Planning Board's letter. Apparently, Chapter 40, Section 22F, gives authority to boards and commissions to adopt some of these different fees. And I think, if I'm not mistaken, Mr. Chairman, the Planning Board is in the process of determining what they want to do with their permit fees. So it would seem appropriate, to me at least, that we give them a chance to do that, get back to us, and we'll probably, if, it would be my position that, in light of that, we probably want to give this public hearing another go.
I would be in agreement.
Counselor Cormier. And thank you, Counselor, for reminding me. I'm in receipt of a letter here from the Planning Board that I should read into the record. Mr. President, addressed to Caitlin Huffman, City Clerk, 25 West Street, Lemmonster, Massachusetts, regarding City Council Petition 48-22, RE, to revise the fee schedule in the city of Lemmonster to begin in July 1, 2022. Dear Caitlin, the Planning Board reviewed the petition on 4/4/22 and voted 5 to 0 to make a positive recommendation that the proposed fee schedule move forward as proposed, noting that all special permit fees in the Water Supply Protection District will be raised to $250 plus reimbursement for all public hearing publications and the cost of certified mail to the abutters. The Board moved that all special permit fees be also increased to $250 plus reimbursement for all public hearing publications and the cost of certified mail to all the abutters. However, upon further research, the Planning Department would like to request additional time to conduct research with the city solicitor as to who has jurisdiction over special permit fees. The current fee for a special permit in the Water Supply Protection District is $200, so a proposal of $250 would be an increase. The changing of a planning board fee may reset, I think she meant to say rest, solely under the authority of the Planning Board. The fees for special permit are not detailed in the zoning ordinance but are on the application form. I would ask that you please refrain on changing any planning board fees until we can get the opinion of the city solicitor. As soon as I obtain the information, I will be reaching out with communication to you and the council. Thank you for your understanding on this matter. Please don't hesitate to reach out if you have any questions. Regards, Elizabeth Wood, AICP Planning and Development Director. With that, anybody in the council? Counselor Frida?
Yeah, well, I don't disagree with the concept of raising some of the fees, because it's been a long time. I just question whether this is the right time to be doing that. You know, with difficult times people have to, if they're trying to improve their property to add on, or whatever they need to do to raise it another $50 to go for applications, I think it's a little steep at this timeframe. And when it comes to number 60, raffles and bazaar permits, you're talking about every church in the city when they have a bazaar that is trying to raise funds to provide for their own churches, to keep them going, in most cases. And does that affect Boy Scouts selling flowers during Mother's Day or other areas? Does that count Girl Scouts that, you know, are in different areas of the city, selling their Girl Scout cookies? Does that constitute some of that? No? Why would that, how would that argument not go for transient vendors or...
They would be considered a hawker and a peddler, because they're doing food, and I don't know that they actually get a license to the police department. The raffle bazars would, that's been the same fee since the 80s. So the idea behind that was it's matching what other communities are doing, because a lot of work goes into the raffle and bazaar permits, and we have to do a lot of reporting to DOR, so it covers that in the mailing that goes to it. And that would cover raffle and bazaar for churches, but it would also cover for, like, the Eagles Club, Knights of Columbus, and other communities that do raffles. You have to think of, like, the dance, like, studios do them sometimes, everything like that. So it's more than just the churches, not trying to single out the churches, because we have more than just churches who apply for them.
They've got to contend with the taxes after. They have to contend with the taxes after. It's even worse.
Let me address the Counselor Frida question.
Even the transient vendors are, that's everyone who sells the flowers at Mother's Day. We've got one tonight.
We only have one.
Chris Rebaugh's been on here for 100 years that I've been here, selling flowers every year.
But we're not increasing the fee. We're just putting it in the fee schedule, so it's easier for the public to see. It's the same fee. That's not increasing. It's always been $100. And Chris is the only one who's ever gotten one with us. So that would just be a reflection of an updated fee schedule. So if somebody from the public were to go online to look at our municipal code, they can find it easily, and it's not hidden in the depths of everything else. Because a lot of people, when they go to look for a fee, they'll go directly to the list of fees for a city and town and look for something like that. So I wanted it to be transparent. That's why I added it in there. It's not going up.
Let me answer Counselor Frida's question if I may.
I don't know. I don't...
I did think about fairness. So what's happening now is, when the work that needs to be done and the cost of legal notices and everything exceeds the cost of the permit, who's supplementing that? The taxpayer. That's who. So I don't think that's fair. I think that the person pulling the permit should cover the cost of that permit. There shouldn't be a subsidy from someone who's not utilizing, getting any utility from the use of that permit or license. That's all we're looking to do. These fees, I couldn't even find out how long it's been. We had someone there with $0.50. I mean, you can't buy a postage stamp for $0.50. So we have to get into a time when we're at least covering our expenses, and that's all we're looking to do here. We're not looking to impose any hardships on anyone, quite the contrary. We're looking to take the burden off of the taxpayer that's currently subsidizing some of these special permit applications for people, you know, who were in a position to pay for it.
A lot of, I think I still have the floor, but a lot of these times, I think that the taxpayer is the one that's applying. The taxpayer is one who's looking to go to the Board of Appeals or something, or City Council for a special permit. Sometimes it isn't, sometimes it is a taxpayer. So I don't think it's always supplemental to the taxpayer.
No, sometimes...
I don't disagree with it. I just think it's the wrong time to be raising anything in the city.
Well, apparently, they've thought that for the last 30 years. It's never the right time, I guess. But I understand your concerns, Counselor. I do. Thank you. Counselor Shalfo Zephyr, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
Through the chair to the Legal Affairs Chairman. Are you going to have a Legal Affairs meeting to discuss this in more detail?
Absolutely.
Okay, okay, good, because I do have a few questions. And the one that I wanted to raise was the Sunday afternoon entertainment, you know, because in my mind, immediately, I went to the Monarch Music Corral. I mean, they have an annual concert here. It's a fundraiser. They do a really nice job. Other people do Christmas and holiday, you know, events and things. So, you know, $20 isn't a lot of money. A $400, I don't know if there are any stage organizations or theater organizations that are now using the auditorium, and $400 might have an impact on, you know, their ability to use the space. But I did have a question, and this is really for the city clerk. Do people who use the auditorium pay a hall fee or a room fee currently?
They're supposed to.
Well, for example, tonight, they were having auditions upstairs in the auditorium when I went up to sign the beam. Now, I don't know if that's an ongoing thing, that an organization comes in routinely or uses the auditorium, and do they pay for the space, I guess is my question.
They are supposed to pay for the space, but that's up to the mayor and his office.
Okay, we'll talk about that, the Legal Affairs Subcommittee.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Ardinger, I noticed you're here.
Yeah, I'm sorry, but, you know, I just need some clarification, I guess, on this, you know, raffles and stuff like that. You know, a lot of the, and I just received some in the mail today from a scholarship program that was run by one of the veterans organizations. And in order to do that, they have to pay a $25 fee?
They're supposed to.
They're supposed to.
Mm-hmm. If they file correctly for the tax purposes, because they have to show what money they get in for the raffle and bazaar and what it's being used towards, because it's supposed to be nonprofit. So it's supposed to be accounted for at the end and zero out.
And then the tax man comes looking for them for 5% or 5 and 1/4% of whatever they make?
Yep. And we have to send that paperwork in on behalf of the person who applies at the end, when they come and give it to us, usually.
Yeah. Yeah. Through the chair to the Counselor across from me. That always comes up at when, you know, schools have raffles or political campaigns have raffles for, you know, when they're having a fundraiser, because people are supposed to get the permit and pay the taxes. So this is an...
Political campaigns can't have raffles.
They're not supposed to have raffles. Well, no, but, well, okay.
No, they can't. Just, I don't want to disabuse anybody of the notion that a political...
Okay. Well, other organizations, I know, that have raised money, when you have a raffle and you describe it as such, it's a whole other process to go through, and you do have to pay taxes on it and everything. So not a great way to raise money.
It's going to hurt, I hate to say it, but it's going to hurt a lot of the local organizations, churches, veterans organizations, schools, because they all do it. And anyway.
They don't all apply, though.
Huh?
They don't all do it the right way, unfortunately.
No, I know that, but it's, you know, you're just sitting there wondering if, and maybe, you know, the Department of Revenue's got bigger fish to fry, but at some point, are they going to come down and say, hey, you haven't done this for 20 years, you owe us X amount of money?
I hope not. It wouldn't be the first time they've audited our records for the information, because I have to submit it to DOR every year, but it's really up to them.
Okay. Thank you.
Raffles and bazars have been the same price since the 1980s. $10.
We're not introducing anything new. This is done on the books.
Yeah, and it's never been listed in our fee schedule, so whatever we do determine the amount to be, I just wanted to add it into the schedule again for transparency. So if anybody's looking for it, they can see it. Yeah.
Just a quick question, and it's for clarification on my end. Automatic amusement device. Are we talking jukeboxes, pool tables, Pac-Man games? What are we talking here?
Claw machines.
Just claw machines, nothing that's already licensed by the...
Pinball machines.
Licensed commission?
Pinball machines, claw machines, like those little ones that you would see at, like, Walmart or something in the corner. Pool tables are their own separate billiards licensed through the Licensing Commission. Lottery-type games, if it's considered that, that goes through Licensing Commission. So it's all those other little trinkets you see at the mall and whatnot are supposed to, but not always, licensed with us. Yep.
Okay. And does the city have a seal to put on those, that we can walk into the market and say, hey, they haven't paid?
I have not, in my time here, seen anybody properly apply for one.
Who is going to enforce these? I mean, now that we're getting them transparently out into the public domain, and we're probably going to do a better, you know, we're going to communicate better about these fees, you know, to Counselor Brady's point, I mean, who would actually enforce and manage them?
It's enforcing it now.
License commission enforces those.
The building department?
License commission would enforce amusement devices. The license commission.
You know, auto dealer licenses, that's the license commission as well. Liquor licenses, license commission.
My fees I do. So business licensing, dog licensing, if somebody's not in compliance, and I send out a letter or a fine for those.
I haven't given up trying to get a lot of these things out to the license commission.
I'm working on that.
I'm going to invite a representative from the license commission down when we have our subcommittee meeting, and we try to get as much input as we can. Counselor Frida?
Yeah. Through the chair to the clerk. When someone gets married in the city hall, do they pay to use the hall?
No, because the mayor has not forced anybody to, he has not charged anybody for use of the hall at this time.
So we've got a lot of things going on in the hall that nobody's paying for.
Yeah.
Using the lights, using the...
Yeah.
Using the custodian, using a lot of things, and we're talking about charging some church or school $25 to have a raffle? Something's not right with that whole picture.
It's been on the, we're not introducing that, Counselor.
That one, it's a $15 raisin fee. Currently, it's a $10 fee.
It's always been on this fee schedule.
It's never been, it's always been a statutory fee by national law that you have to pay at least a minimum of $10 for a raffle and bazaar permit. It's just hasn't been changed in over 20 years, 40 years.
I would venture a bet that 25% of the raffles conducted in the city pull a permit.
Less than that.
I have about eight that apply regularly.
Which is another issue.
Do you want to go to the public?
I do. Is there anyone in the public this evening that would like to speak in favor of or in opposition to Petition 48-22? For the second time, is there anyone in attendance this evening who would like to speak in favor of or in opposition to Petition 48-22? And for the third and final time, is there anyone in attendance this evening that would like to speak in favor of or in opposition to Petition 48-22? Seeing none, Mr. Chairman, I would like to continue this public hearing.
Do you have a date and time?
How much time do you want? Our next meeting is coming up quick. We have Planning Board coming back to us with another item on May 9. I don't know if you want to have a subcommittee meeting in between.
I think the subcommittee meeting should come after the public hearing is concluded, as a matter of...
You want to keep the public hearing open, so if you guys come back with any adjustments, we can make them and have public input.
I don't know. I would suggest having the public hearing continued to the, not the next meeting, but the meeting after that.
May 9?
Give the Planning Board enough time.
That's fine. And then give it a...
Yeah. So then, I would recommend May 9 at 15 minutes, do you think, would be appropriate?
At least.
At least, or half hour?
It was 20, 20 minutes.
20 minutes, then 6:30 PM.
All right. We can vote on that when we take action during the meeting, if you'd like. And we have a, so it's being continued. We have another public hearing at 6:50 PM on 20-22, Legal Affairs.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, throw that file over here. And overflow lots. Thank you, Mr. President. Petition 20-22, Elizabeth Wood, on behalf of the Planning Board, requests to amend the zoning ordinance pertaining to the parking of unregistered vehicles, RE overflow lots. This matter was before us for the first time, wow, June 14, 2021. We've had public hearings open... We've had public hearings open for quite some time since February, it looks like, 14. We still have referrals out, actually, on this as well, from the Building Inspector and the Zoning Board of Appeals. I'm in possession of a letter from the Planning Board that I'd like to read into the record as well. This letter is dated April 6, 2022, City Council, 25 West Street, Leominster, Massachusetts. RE, petition 20-22, overflow lots, to amend the zoning ordinance pertaining to the parking of unregistered vehicles. Attention, City Council, on 4/4/22, the Planning Board voted 5 to 0 to continue the public hearing for petition 20-22, RE zoning amendment, RE overflow lots, to amend the zoning ordinance pertaining to the parking of unregistered vehicles to 5/16/2022 at 6:30 PM. The Planning Board wishes to make amendments to the proposed zoning language prior to the adoption of the zoning amendment by the City Council. The Subcommittee met on 3/21/22 and will meet again soon. The Board will continue to work with a Subcommittee to come up with amended language. Once the Board has received recommendation from Subcommittee and agree upon language and close the hearing, I will provide you with further correspondence, including the exact language that is recommended. This will be after the 5/16/2022 hearing date. Regards, Elizabeth Wood, AICP Planning and Development Director. So, as the Planning Director told us the last time this was on our agenda, they formed a Subcommittee, tried to hammer out the language of this particular petition, and that process is ongoing. So apparently, it's going to go to at least May 16, 2022, which puts us in an interesting position. So I think we have some folks here that may want to speak in this petition for the public, but in the meantime, we're probably going to, this is probably going to need further time to continue the public hearing, obviously, since the Planning Board, the Planning Board isn't ready. Let me go to members in my committee. Counsel Benadryl?
I agree, Mr. Chairman. I mean, in all practicality, we're going to have to continue the public hearing, at least until May 23, so I'm okay with that.
Counsel Bolling, Congress?
I agree.
All right. She's in agreement as well. Any members of the council? All right. Let me go to the public then. Are there any folks in attendance this evening who would like to speak in favor of or in opposition to petition 20-22? Once again, is there anyone in attendance this evening that would like to speak either in favor of or in opposition to petition 20-22? And for the third and final time, is there anyone in attendance this evening that would like to speak in favor of or in opposition to petition 20-22? Hearing none. Mr. President, I would ask that we continue this matter to--
May 23, 2022 at 6:50 PM.
6:50 PM. Okay. And we'll vote on that later on.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We are now going to hold the public forum. A public forum is an opportunity for any member of the audience to speak on any matter listed specifically on the City Council agenda. Speakers will be asked to come to the microphone and state their formal name and address, along with identifying the specific item or items they wish to address. Each speaker is respectfully asked to keep their comments within a two-minute timeframe. The council will not be responding or answering any questions, however, at the discretion of the City Council President, clarification may be given. We do have one person that has signed up, Ryan Young, 176 Grafton Street. Please step to the microphone.
Good evening, Ryan Young, 176 Grafton Street. Actually, here on behalf of the Leominster Firefighters Local 1841, I am the current president. I'm just asking for your support on C-63. That would be an appropriation of $161,267. That's to fund the, we currently, we, on March 15, we signed an agreement with the city for our new collective bargaining agreement. Our past agreement had expired July of 2021, so I believe this money would be to pay, retroactive pay for this past year. It was a very good negotiation with the city, very fair, and I think it was a fair contract. So I'd just like to ask for your support. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. There is nobody else that has signed up at this point to speak at the public forum, so I'll ask, would anybody in the audience like to speak at the public forum? Once again, would anybody in the audience like to speak at the public forum? For the third and final time, would anybody else like to speak to the public forum? If so, come to the microphone. If not, I now declare the public forum closed, and we now stand back in session, and we will begin with items under Communications from the mayor, beginning with C-67. Madam Clerk?
C-67, excuse me. Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, request an appropriation of $75,000 be made to the unemployment insurance account, the same amount to be transferred from the excess and deficiency account.
And C-67 is referred to the Chairman of Finance.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is the first time on the calendar. I'd ask for regular course.
C-67 has been given regular course. Moving on to C-68.
C-68, Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, request the acceptance of the CDBG Budget/Action Plan for the City of Leominster, year 48.
And C-68 is referred to the Chairwoman of Ways and Means.
Mr. President, regular course, and I believe we need to schedule a public hearing on the matter.
Yes.
Okay. So we will give C-68 regular course and schedule a public hearing for April 25, 2022 at 6:35 PM, as stated on the agenda. All those in favor of establishing that hearing signify unusual manner. Those opposed, by a vote of 9 to 0, that hearing has been established.
Does she want Ellen to come down, as usual?
Oh, yeah. Do you want to invite Ellen Racine down as well? Should we take a vote? Probably should take a vote on that. If there's any questions or comments about Ellen coming down, if not, all those in favor of voting to have Ellen Racine come down to address this on C-68 signify unusual manner. Those opposed, by a vote of 9 to 0, she will be asked to come down to explain her items under this year's CDBG. Moving on to C-69.
C-69, Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, request that the following sections of the City of Leominster Revised Ordinance, Chapter 16, Personnel, Article 2, Personnel, Wage and Salary Plan, Division 3, Classification Plan, Section 16-34, Classification of Positions be amended effective immediately to replace the existing classification with a new classification plan presented below. Currently, it reads Class Title Assistant Purchasing Agent, and the classification is an S5. And that would be struck and inserted in its place. The following would be Class Title Assistant Purchasing Agent, Classification S7.
And C-69 is referred to the Chairman of Legal Affairs. Okay, that's going to be regular course. We also do have to establish an hearing for April 25, 2022 at 6:50 PM. If that's okay with you, Mr. Chairman. Okay, all those in favor of giving this regular course and establishing this hearing for April 25, 2022 at 6:50 PM, signify unusual manner. Those opposed, by a vote of 9 to 0, that hearing has been established. Moving on to petitions, first time on the agenda, 50-22. Madam Clerk?
50-22, Entertainment Cinemas Boulevard, request to renew theater license located at 45 SAC Boulevard.
And 50-22 is referred to the Chairwoman of Ways and Means.
Regular course, Mr. President.
And 50-22 has been given regular course. 51-22.
51-22, Christopher Rivard, request to renew transient vendor license for the sale of flowers and plants.
Okay, 51-22 is also referred to the Chairwoman of Ways and Means.
Regular course, Mr. President.
And 51-22 has been given regular course. Moving on to matters before the City Council, does the Chairman of Finance have a financial report?
I do, Mr. President. We began the fiscal year with a balance and stabilization account of $19,904,603. During the course of the fiscal year, we've added $29,621 in interest, as well as an appropriation from our free cash certification this year of $3.7 million, totaling $23,634,224. If we approve the matters before us this evening, or the one item that's been put on the agenda, we will have spent during the course of the fiscal year $3,9998, leaving a balance of $19,733,226. In addition to that, I wanted to follow up a little bit. The last meeting, I talked about revenues, both general revenues and special statutory revenues. And this evening, I wanted to just touch on a little bit about how those get broken down in expenditure. And pretty close, pretty round number, but pretty close to accurate, our revenue for fiscal, the last fiscal year was just about $200 million. Now, our statutory budget for that fiscal year was $144 million. We spent, was earmarked to spend, well, I take that back. The revenue for that fiscal year, fiscal '21, was $144 million, but we earmarked $137 million, leaving a buffer of about $7 million, which is what we customarily do. During the course of the fiscal year, we did spend about half of that, $3.5 million. So the other $3.5 million ended up in our free cash certification, which is, like I said, pretty common. Breaking that down, the general fund budget, we had city salaries in wages of a little over $24 million. School salary and wages were almost $54 million. So nearly $78 million of the total $137 million budgeted was spent in salaries and wages. A million, about $1,008, went to pension, and the rest of it, broken down in expenses. The schools, about $23.1 million, and, I'm sorry, the city, about $23.1 million for employees. And the schools, about $12.9 million for expenses. Schools naturally are our greatest priority. We educate 6,000 children in our system, and naturally, it's one of the biggest drivers in terms of our expenses. In addition to the general fund revenue and our statutory budget, we take in about another $60 million of special revenue funds from the federal and state governments, largely. All of that is earmarked money, whether it be for schools or for other city purposes. And that's basically what happens to our pie in terms of our revenue and our expenditures. So I wanted to just kind of sort of put that out there for the public, so they get an idea as we approach budget time where we are with our various numbers in this city. Last couple of meetings, Counsel Afrika had asked me about our senior tax relief programs, and I have some information on that. We actually have three different programs that we deal with. One of them is senior tax relief, which is not administered by our assessors, but is actually administered by our senior citizens, people. That's where a senior, any senior can work and earn up to $500 to be applied to their taxes. They get paid a paycheck for that work, but it actually should be applied to their tax bill. In addition to that, we have two elderly exemptions. One under Clause 41D, which is for people over 65, and it's up to $750. And there's an income and asset test associated with that particular exemption. We have another exemption under Clause 17E, which last year amounted to $502, and that one has an asset test only. Both of those are time-sensitive, and the applications for those open up in October. In addition to that, and I think this was what Counsel Afrika was driving at, we have an elderly and disabled program for people who have significant hardships. The criteria are very difficult to meet, and there is a committee that makes decisions about these applications. And it's a committee of three. It consists of the chief assessor, the treasurer, and a citizen that they name on a yearly basis. There's no permanent appointee, but when they decide to act on these applications, they name somebody. They get about four applications a year. It's not a very big program, and it's funded through donations from city residents. And there's a program where people can donate to it, and the relief that's given on these applications comes from that donated funds. And that's what I wanted to bring to this council's attention, and hopefully, Counsel Afrika, that answers your questions.
Counsel Afrika?
Through the chair, thank you for that. The tax relief program, I actually authored that a number of years ago. We were only the second community in the state to do it, and it's worked pretty well over the years. The last thing that you mentioned is the one that this person had mentioned to me, and they just got it again. I'm glad you brought it up, because we just got another water bill. And it's in the water bills. This person called me again.
Yeah.
I think the concern is, I don't know if they're looking for help. I asked, but I didn't get an answer. But I think the concern was the citizens that are on that committee, I don't know if it's an embarrassment piece, they wanted to know who the citizens are on that committee, along with the assessors, and I said we were checking. So--
There's only one citizen besides--
I thought there were two. I looked at it quickly. I didn't really pay attention to it.
It is, the application that they need to make is not open to public inspection, so it's not a public record, and it can't be disclosed to the--
Right. I would think it's confidential.
Right. But it is, of course, disclosed to the committee, which, again, is the, as Mr. Connor tells me, is him, the chief assessor, the treasurer, and one citizen selected by the two of them.
But if it's a committee in the city, doesn't this council have to vote on the members of that committee?
I don't think we ever have, and what Mr. Connor suggests to me is they pick that citizen on an ad hoc basis annually, and it's usually somebody different. It's not always the same person. But they're the two, the two of them, the treasurer and the chief assessor, are the ones that do the selecting.
I mean, I agree with the committee, and I think we should do it. I think we should look into that, though, because I think every committee in the city that's put together, regardless of what it is, has to come through the council, I believe.
I don't know the precise answer to that question.
No, but I think we should look into it in case that is--
I'd be happy to do that.
We may have more people coming forward with the way conditions are--
Yeah.
Especially with values and taxation now. Might be more people.
I will look into the fact as to whether the council has any jurisdiction over the composition of the committee.
It's just a formality of, you know, picking, the mayor pick a citizen or two. For some reason, I thought there were two, but--
Just one.
I should have it, because it just came in our bill. So I'll look too, but--
All right. I'll get an answer for you.
Okay.
All right. Are there any other, you're welcome, any other questions or comments on the financial report? Okay, seeing none, we will move on to items under Finance, beginning with C-60. Mr. Chairman, are you ready to report?
I am. C-60, Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, request an appropriation of $10,000 be made to the Wire Department overtime account, the same amount to be transferred from the excess and deficiency account. We have a letter from Chief Sidlow dated March 23, 2022. Dear Mayor Mazzarella, on behalf of the Wire Department, I'm requesting the sum of $10,000 for overtime costs. Overtime spent to date is related to storm-related issues, power outages, fire alarm box issues, traffic light problems, installation of new radios and existing radio issues, wiring of new generators, and renovations at 210 Lancaster Street Fire Department Headquarters. Thank you for your continued support. Should you have any questions or concerns, please feel free to contact this office. It looks like they've got quite a bit of things to address there. It looks like they did it fairly economically. It would be my position, Mr. President, to grant C-60. I'd ask you to check with members of my committee.
Okay. Counselor Angelini?
I'm in agreement as well.
Okay. Counselor Cormier?
I agree.
Okay. So you've heard the unanimous recommendation of the Finance Committee to grant C-60. Is there any further discussion? Counsel Afrika?
Just a quick comment. I don't think people realize the Wire Department, they're like 24 hours in there. Every time there's an accident and there's a malfunction of a traffic signal, they're out. And I mean, they're out straight all the time. So, you know, I think it's highly understandable that there's overtime requested for that.
All right. Any other comments on C-60? Seeing none, all those in favor of granting C-60 signify unusual manner. Those opposed, by a vote of 9 to 0, C-60 has been granted. Does the chairman have an order?
Yes, I do, Mr. President. Order that the sum of $10,000 be made to the-- Order that the sum of $10,000 be made to the wire department overtime account, same amount to be transferred from the excess and deficiency account. Move for the adoption of the order.
Okay, you've heard the request for the adoption of the order. All those in favor of adopting the order signify by saying yea.
Yea.
Those opposed, by a vote of nine to zero, the order has been adopted. Moving on to C-61. Mr. Chairman, are you ready to report?
I am. C-61, Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, request an interdepartmental transfer of $2,200 be made to the police department, police chief salary and wages account, the same amount to be transferred from the police department lieutenant salary and wages account. There's a letter accompanying this from Chief Kennedy. Dear Mayor, to fund the fiscal year '22 portion of the recently signed contract between the city and myself, I request a transfer of $2,200 of excess funds in the lieutenant account. After your review, please let us know if you have any questions. So as the chief points out, this is simply taking money from one pot at the police department, putting it into another to satisfy the salary requirements of the chief's contract. Mr. President, it would be my position to grant C-61, and ask you to check with members of my committee.
Okay, you've heard the chairman's recommendation, and I do apologize, I think I went out of order last time. Counselor Cormier?
You're forgiven.
Thank you.
I agree.
And Counselor Angelini?
That gives me the opportunity to make it unanimous, Mr. President.
Beautiful, thank you very much. You've heard the unanimous recommendation of the Finance Committee to grant C-61. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of granting C-61 signify in usual manner. Those opposed, by a vote of nine to zero, C-61 has been granted. Does the chairman have an order?
Yes, order that the sum of $2,200 be interdepartmentally transferred to the police department, police chief salary and wages account, the same amount to be transferred from the police department lieutenant salary and wages account. Move for the adoption of the order.
Okay, you've heard the request for the adoption of the order. All those in favor of adopting the order signify by saying yea.
Yea.
Those opposed, by a vote of nine to zero, C-61 has been adopted. C-63, I just would first like to say that, if the record may reflect, that I do need to abstain, as I have an immediate family member on the fire department, and my brother will be directly impacted by C-63. Mr. Chairman?
Okay, C-63, Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, request an appropriation of $161,267 be made to the fire department salary and wages overtime and vacation/sick buyback accounts, the same amount to be transferred from the collective bargaining account. Regarding to fund increased costs associated with the contract settlement, we heard during the public forum, the union president suggesting that we happily came to an agreement with Local 1841, contract negotiated between the union and the city. And also happily, we reserved money in the collective bargaining account, anticipating this expenditure, so there's a place to appropriate it from. So it would be my position, Mr. President, that we honor our contract with the union and grant C-63. And I'm sorry, I'm referring these comments not to you, Mr. President, but to Madam Vice President.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As the clerk of the Finance, I would be in agreement with that, and I will ask the third member, Counselor Angelini.
I'm in agreement as well.
You've heard the unanimous recommendation of the Finance Department. Is there any further discussion? Yes, Counselor?
Through the chair of the Finance, will we be getting a copy of this contract?
Yeah, I'm sure it's public record, I'm sure we can get a copy of it. I could ask the city clerk to send it to us all electronically, I don't know how many pages it is, but...
I will request it and send it to you guys when I get it.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Hearing, no other discussion. You've heard the, again, the unanimous recommendation of the Finance Committee. All those in favor, please signify in the usual manner by a vote of eight to zero. And, Mr. Chairman, do you have an order?
I do. Order that the sum of $161,267 be made to the fire department salary and wages overtime and vacation/sick buyback accounts, the same amount to be transferred from the collective bargaining account. Move for the adoption of the order.
You've heard the movement for the adoption of the order. All those in favor, please answer by saying yea.
Yea.
All those opposed, by a vote of eight to zero, the order has been granted.
Okay, moving on to C-64. Mr. Chairman, are you ready to report?
I am. C-64, Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, request an appropriation of $50,000 be made to the snow and ice overtime account, the same amount to be transferred from the excess and deficiency account. We usually are allowed by state statute deficit spend in a snow and ice account, and typically, we all have seen these appropriations pretty commonly throughout the years. The overtime account currently, I think, is over budget by $12,044. I think that's line item 42330000, and these funds are necessary to pay that and probably some other anticipated bills that are coming through the system. So, Mr. President, it would be my position to grant C-64.
And Counselor Cormier, are you in agreement?
I agree.
Counselor Angelini?
I'm in agreement as well.
Okay, you've heard the unanimous recommendation of the Finance Committee to grant C-64. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of granting C-54 signify by saying, signify in usual manner. Those opposed, by a vote of nine to zero, C-64 has been granted. Does the chairman have an order?
I do. Order that the sum of $50,000 be made to the snow and ice overtime account, same amount to be transferred from the excess and deficiency account. Move for the adoption of the order.
You've heard the request for the adoption of the order. All those in favor of adopting the order signify by saying yea.
Yea.
Those opposed, by a vote of nine to zero, C-64 has been adopted. C-65?
C-65, Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, request an appropriation of $175,000 be made to the snow and ice expense account, same amount to be transferred from the excess and deficiency account. Again, similar situation to the last communication, and again, line item 4232000 in our Munis report on page three. Originally appropriated at the beginning of the fiscal year at $850,000, expended through the date of this report, which was April 6, of $1,018,128.2. In other words, over spent by the sum of $168,128.2. So obviously, this $175,000 is necessary to pay our bills. It would be my position, Mr. President, to grant C-65.
Counselor Cormier?
I agree.
Counselor Angelini?
And I will make it unanimous.
Okay, you've heard the unanimous recommendation of the Finance Committee to grant C-65. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of granting C-65 signify in usual manner. Those opposed, by a vote of nine to zero, C-65 has been granted. Does the chairman have an order?
I do. Order that the sum of $175,000 be appropriated to the snow and ice expense account, same to be transferred from the excess and deficiency account. Move for the adoption of the order.
You've heard the request for the adoption of the order. All those in favor of adopting the order signify by saying yea.
Yea.
Those opposed, by a vote of nine to zero, C-65 has been adopted. C-66?
C-66, Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, request an interdepartmental transfer of $31,500 be made to the police department captain's salary and wages account, the same amount to be transferred from the police department lieutenant's salary wages account. Once again, we have moving some money from one pot to the other. We have a letter from the chief of police dated March 8 to the mayor. Dear Mayor, to fund the fiscal year '22 portion of the recently signed contract between the city and John for her, I request the transfer of $31,500 of excess funds in the lieutenant account to the captain account. After your review, please let us know if you have any questions. So as I said, this is just taking money from one pot at the police department to the other where it's needed, and in conjunction with the appointment and the contract, I would ask, Mr. President, I would ask that this be granted, and I'd ask you to poll my committee.
Counselor Cormier?
I agree.
Counselor Angelini?
I'm in agreement as well.
Okay, you've once again heard the unanimous recommendation of the Finance Committee to grant C-66. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of granting C-66 signify in usual manner. Those opposed, by a vote of nine to zero, C-66 has been granted. Does the chairman have an order?
I do. Order the sum of $31,500 be interdepartmentally transferred to the police department captain's salary and wages account, the same amount to be transferred to the police department lieutenant's salary wages account. Move for the adoption of the order.
Okay, you've heard the request for the adoption of the order. All those in favor of adopting the order signify by saying yea.
Yea.
Those opposed, by a vote of nine to zero, C-66 has been adopted. Thank you very much to the Finance Team and the wonderful report that was given, we appreciate it. Moving on to items under Legal Affairs, beginning with 20-22. Mr. Chairman, are you ready to report?
I certainly am, Mr. President. 20-22, Elizabeth Wood, on behalf of the Planning Board, request to amend the zoning ordinance pertaining to the parking of unregistered vehicles, RE overflow lots. As we noted earlier, the Planning Board will not be ready and have the language tuned up until at least May 16. We've continued the public hearing, I'd like for further time and to continue the public hearing until, I don't have the date in front of me, but...
May 23 at 6:50 p.m.
May 23 at 6:50. Okay. And I'd like you to check with members of my committee.
Counselor Badanza?
I am in agreement.
Counselor Cormier?
I will make it unanimous.
Perfect. You've heard the unanimous recommendation of the Legal Affairs Committee to give 20-22 further time and continue the public hearing until May 23, 2022, at 6:50 p.m. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify in the usual manner. Those opposed, by a vote of nine to zero, 20-22 has been given further time with a public hearing continuation to May 23, 2022, 6:50 p.m. Moving on to 48-22.
48-22, Peter Angelini, Ward 5 Council, request to amend the City of Leamster revise ordinances, Section 12-2 as attached. This amendment is proposed to take effect July 1, 2022. RE to revise the fee schedule in the City of Leamster to begin July 1, 2022, for fiscal year 2023. Again, Mr. President, earlier this evening, we opened a public hearing. I think we had some wonderful questions and comments from not only my committee, but the council in general. We had a lot of work to do on this petition, I'm confident that we'll get it done. But in the meantime, we'd like to continue the public hearing, give us further time to...
May 9, 2022.
May 9, 2022, at 6:30 p.m.
Perfect.
Counselor Badanza, are you...
Check with members of my committee.
In agreement with that?
I am.
Counselor Cormier?
I agree.
Okay, so you've heard the unanimous recommendation of the Legal Affairs Committee to give 48-22 further time with a public hearing continuation of May 9, 2022, at 6:30 p.m. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify in usual manner. Those opposed, by a vote of nine to zero, 48-22 has been given further time with a continuation of the public hearing to May 9 at 6:30 p.m. Moving on to 49-22. Mr. Chairman, are you ready to report?
I am, Mr. President. 49-22, Elizabeth Wood, on behalf of the Planning Board, request to amend the zoning ordinance pertaining to the solar ordinance, Article 3, Table of Uses, Section 22-104 of zoning per attached letter. Mr. Chairman, we have a public hearing scheduled for May 9, 2022, at 6:50 p.m. on this, so I would ask that we give us further time.
Okay.
And I would ask you to check with members of my committee.
Sure. Counselor Badanza?
I'm in agreement.
Counselor Cormier?
I agree.
Okay. You've heard the unanimous recommendation of Legal Affairs to give 49-22 further time, and the public hearing is set for May 9, 2022 already, right? So, is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify in usual manner. Those opposed, by a vote of nine to zero, 49-22 has been given further time. Moving on to C-62.
C-62, Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, request that the city council authorize the mayor, on behalf of the city, to finalize the conservation restriction, CR, easement on watershed property to the Department of Conservation and Recreation, DCR. RE, this is part of the city's acquisition of Sholen Farms in 2001, and will finalize the terms of the CR, and has been reviewed by the city solicitor. Mr. President, you may note...
Mr. President, I'm recusing myself due to a conflict of interest.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. President. If you recall, we had a informational hearing this evening with Mr. Brooks, Mr. Fleming, and Mr. Kennedy in attendance, and I thought they, Mr. Brooks did a wonderful job, as well as the other two gentlemen. And my recommendation would be that we adopt this conservation restriction and authorize the mayor to enter into this document.
Okay, all right.
And I would ask you, of course, to check with members of my committee.
Counselor Badanza?
I'm in favor.
Okay, and Counselor Cormier?
I agree.
Okay, you've heard the unanimous recommendation to grant C-62. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of granting C-62, please signify in usual manner by a vote of eight to zero. Please note Counselor Frida's abstention, she's left the chambers. C-62 has been granted by a vote of eight to zero. Moving on to items under Ways and Means, reappointments. Madam Clerk, are we able to take these in block?
Yes.
Okay. I'm not in opposition to take them in block, but I am on here for a reappointment to the Disability Commission. I do serve on that commission. The commission does require, or it does, it's in their bylaws, that an elected official be on that commission, and so I am the elected official that does sit there, and I am also the treasurer of the Disability Commission. So just if the record could please reflect that I will be abstaining from my own vote, obviously, I think I am biased as to my own...
Why don't we just separate that one out?
If you'd like to do that, we can do that too, absolutely, if there's, if you have a desire to do that, absolutely. So let's do all the reappointments in block and leave out mine for now, Madam Chair.
Yes, yes.
Thank you.
And, Mr. President, if it's okay with you, have the clerk read these.
Sure.
Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, request the reappointment of Wendy Weeks, 142 Blossom Street, to the Board of Health, term to expire April 15, 2025. Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, request the reappointment of Vicky Briggs, 62 West Street, to the Cultural Commission, term to expire April 15, 2025. Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, request the reappointment of Marcel Ledger, 74 Buttermell Road, to the Housing Authority, term to expire April 15, 2027. Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, request the reappointment of Carol Victorioso, 19 Water Street, to the Planning Board, term to expire April 15, 2027. Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, request the reappointment of Salvatore Tricconi, 12 Celestial Way, Pepperell Mast, to the Planning Board, term to expire April 15, 2027.
Okay, and all these...
Mr. President, it would be my position that we confirm all these reappointments, as read.
Okay.
And I'd ask you to check with the members of my committee.
Counselor Ardinger?
I agree.
Okay, and Counselor Deacon?
I agree.
Okay, you've heard the unanimous recommendation of the Ways and Means Committee to grant all of those reappointments. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of granting those reappointments signify in usual manner. Those opposed, by a vote of nine to zero, those reappointments have taken place.
Mr. President, thank you.
Vice President?
Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, request the reappointment of David Cormier, 9 Deer Run, to the Disability Commission, term to expire April 15, 2025. It would be my position to grant the reappointment, and I will check with the clerk of the Ways and Means, Counselor Ardinger?
I agree.
And Counselor Deacon?
I'm in agreement.
You've heard the unanimous recommendation of the Ways and Means Committee to grant the reappointment of David Cormier to the Disability Commission. All those in favor, please recognize in the usual manner. By a vote of eight to zero, Mr. Cormier has been reappointed.
Moving on to 47-22. Does the chairwoman have a report?
I do. Mr. President, Mark Gordon, on behalf of Music Mania Incorporated, request to renew license to deal secondhand articles at 14 Water Tower Plaza. This was given regular course, all the referrals are in. I find this application to be in good standing, and it would be my position to... I find this application to be in good standing, and it would be my position to renew the license in this matter, and I'd ask you to check with members of my committee.
Okay, Councilor Ardinger?
I agree.
Councilor Deacon?
I agree.
Okay, you've heard the unanimous recommendation of the Ways and Means Committee to grant 47-22. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of granting 47-22, please signify in usual manner. Those opposed, by a vote of nine to zero, 47-22 has been granted. Moving on to items under new business. We have a first reading of an ordinance, which is 39-22. I know that last time we hadn't gotten these back.
We have them.
I did, I thought I seen them in there. Okay, Councilor Angelini, you ready to report?
I am indeed, Mr. President. Thank you. First reading of an ordinance. Be it ordained by the city council of the city of Lemmister as follows. Amending Chapter 1 of the revised ordinances entitled General Provisions. Chapter 1 of the revised ordinance entitled General Provisions is hereby amended by inserting the following new section entitled electioneering policy. Section 1-12, electioneering policy. No poster, card, handbill, placard, picture, or circular intended to influence the action of a voter, other than those expressly authorized by general law, Chapter 54, Section 65, shall be posted, exhibited, circulated, or distributed in the city clerk's office, the city's municipal building at 25 West Street, or within 150 feet of the municipal building entrance doors accessible to the public during each designated absentee or early voting period of time that permits the casting of in-person votes. Mr. President, I would ask that we adopt the first reading of this ordinance, and I would ask you to poll members of my committee.
Okay. Councilor Badanza?
I'm in favor.
Councilor Cormier?
I agree.
Okay, you've heard the unanimous recommendation of the Ways and Means Committee to adopt the first reading of 39-22. Is there any discussion?
We go Affairs Committee.
What did I say?
You said Ways and Means.
Oh, sorry, Legal Affairs Committee. Has any further discussion? Seeing none, we will do this in a roll call vote, beginning with Councilor Badanza?
Yea.
Councilor Cormier?
Yea.
Councilor Ardinger?
Yea.
Councilor Angelini?
Yea.
Councilor Brady?
Yea.
Councilor Schalfu Zephyr?
Yea.
Councilor Deacon?
Yea.
Councilor Frieda?
Yea.
And I will be recorded as yea by a vote of nine to zero, 39-22. The first reading has been adopted. 24-22, is the chair ready to report?
Yes, I am, Mr. President. 24-22, Elizabeth Wood, on behalf of the planning board, requests to amend the zoning ordinance pertaining to performance guarantees for site plans. This is RE to ensure that all conditions of approval issued by a planning board for site plan are completed. Be it ordained by the city council of the city of Lemmister as follows. Article 11 of the zoning ordinance entitled Site Plan Approval is hereby amended by adding the following subsections to Section 22.59, Application, 59.1, Performance Guarantee. In accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53G and a half, the planning board may require the applicant for site plan to file with the board as a condition of approval, a bond or other such surety acceptable in the form and amount to the planning board. This surety is to cover the cost of construction such as driveways, utilities, landscaping, and other site improvements, but not limited to erosion control measures and off-site environmental impacts, which left incomplete or improperly constructed present a public health and safety hazard or nuisance. Further, a performance guarantee between the applicant and the city will specify the manner in which the on- or off-site improvements will be completed, and the specific manner, and a timeframe, a maximum of one year, in which the work will be completed and the surety will be released. Said bond will be held by the city treasurer in an interest-bearing account. 59.1.1, Release of Performance Guarantee. Upon completion of all or a portion of the improvements required by a performance agreement entered into under Section 59.1 of this ordinance, the applicant may request either partial or full release of his or her bond or other such surety as has been posted by the applicant pursuant to Section 59.1 by sending a statement of completion and request for release by the planning board to the city clerk and date stamped by the city clerk. It shall then be forwarded to the planning board for a determination. If the planning board determines that the said construction has been completed fully or partially, it shall release fully or partially the interest of the city in such bond or other surety and return it to the person who furnished it. 59.1.2, Refusal of Release. If the planning board determines that said site improvements have not been either fully or adequately completed, it shall specify in a notice sent by registered mail to the applicant and the city clerk that details wherein said site improvements failed to comply with the requirements of the zoning, of this zoning ordinance. 59.1.3, Exercise of Performance Guarantee. If the site plan is not completed to the satisfaction of the planning board within the specified timeframe designated by the board, the board has the authority to exercise the surety bond or passbook account in order to complete the required improvements as designated in site plan approval. Mr. President, I would recommend that we adopt the first reading of this ordinance, and I would ask you to check with members of my committee.
Councilor Badanza?
I'm in favor.
Councilor Cormier?
I agree.
Okay, you've heard the unanimous recommendation of the Legal Affairs Committee to grant 20, the first reading of 24-22. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, we will do this in a roll call vote, beginning with Councilor Badanza?
Yea.
Councilor Cormier?
Yea.
Councilor Ardinger?
Yea.
Councilor Angelini?
Yea.
Councilor Brady?
Yea.
Councilor Schalfu Zephyr?
Yea.
Councilor Deacon?
Yea.
Councilor Frieda?
Yea.
And I will be recorded as yea by a vote of nine to zero. The first reading of 24-22 has been adopted. Moving on to, are there any other items under new business that anybody has? I don't, there's nothing else on the agenda. Anything under old business? Councilor Cormier?
Mr. President, just quickly, Councilor Frieda, at the last meeting, you asked me to do a little research into committees and some of our appointments and attendants.
Yep.
And to look into that a little bit. In light of what has gone on in the city for the past 10 or 12 days, I didn't get to that. So I will do that, and I will have hopefully a report at the next meeting. But I wanted to let you know, I haven't forgotten about it. Just in light of what was going on, I thought maybe that was a little too much, so we'll get it done at the next meeting.
To the Chair of the Ways and Means Chair, the only question, again, people asking me that go to a meeting and they have to have it canceled because it's on a quorum. So, you know, if that presents a big problem, and I know it's difficult with the COVID time that we've had, but should make it even easier to be able to run a meeting on Zoom.
But I will look into it. I just wanted to let you know.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. Any other items under the, under old business? Anything under the community calendar? Councilor Frieda?
Just a couple things. I think we all got the notice on the topping off ceremony for the police station for Monday, April 25th at 1 o'clock. We will be getting updates. I have my 28th police station meeting on Thursday, and it's, now they're starting to be fun. Before, they were a lot of work. Now they're getting a little bit more visionary, I guess. So hopefully, everybody can be excited about that date as well. And just one other thing, congratulations to Councilor Brady for making New England Cable News with his restaurant. They, what is it? I think it's Wicked Bites. Is that what it is, Councilor? Wicked Bites that visited, it's like a Phantom Gourmet for New England Cable News. So they visited his restaurant and showed another good part of Lemmister on New England Cable News. So congratulations to that.
Nice. Okay, is there anything else under the community calendar? Seeing none, do we have a motion to adjourn?
So move.
I think I saw Councilor Badanza saying first, then Councilor Angelini. All those in favor signify in usual manner. Those opposed, by a vote of nine to zero, we are now adjourned.
The Lemmister City Council meeting is funded in part by DeCarolus Insurance Agency at www.decarolusinsuranceagency.com and by Avidia Bank at www.avidiabank.com.